Leading the order, would you call the roll, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
All right, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Girl Scout Troop Number 101.
Audience attention. Color guard attention. Color guard advance. Color guard, list the colors. Color guard, list the colors. Audience, the flag of your country, please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color guard, dismiss.
Thank you very much, Girl Scout Troop 101, we appreciate that. At this time, I'm going to read a proclamation declaring the week of October 23rd through 31st of 2023 as Red Ribbon Week. It says, whereas alcohol and other drug abuse in the nation has reached epidemic stages, and whereas it's imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs, and whereas the National Family Partnership is sponsoring the National Red Ribbon Campaign, offering citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles, no use of illegal drugs, no illegal use of legal drugs, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through 31st, and whereas business, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service organizations, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyle by wearing and displaying red ribbons during the week-long campaign, and whereas the City of Moore further commits its resources to ensure the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign. Now therefore, I, Vice Mayor, on behalf of our Mayor Glenn Lewis, the Mayor of the City of Moore, dear hereby proclaim October 23rd through 31st, 2023, as Red Ribbon Week in the City of Moore, and encourage all citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities, and I hereby direct that the Southwest 34th Street Bridge be lit with red lights in recognition of Red Ribbon Week to serve as a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free state. Sign and approve this 16th day of October. And also, I would just, I've had opportunity to serve on the Red Ribbon Campaign along with Officer Dudley, and ONG has a representative, OEC, and and a representative from the Ireland, John, or the Old Town Association have all worked and met months prior to this, organizing it all. We'll have a parade that will start at 1:00 on the 28th, and right now, we have about 30 entries, and then after that, we'll go into Haunt Old Town and be celebrating all of those festivities at night. So it's going to be a great week. I would also, that we're going to have a banner like this one that will be at all of the elementary schools in Moore School District that will be displayed, and the kids will have an opportunity to sign that if they so choose. So we're looking forward to it, and it'll be a great opportunity, so come out and celebrate with us. Now to the fun stuff. Our consent docket is Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held October 2nd, 2023. Receive the minutes of the regular Parks Board meeting held October, or held September 5th, 2023. C is accept correction of plat from Crafton Toll Engineers to correct the spelling of Broadmoor Drive to Broadmore Drive in the Broadmoor Heights Edition, Section 2. Receive and approve the annual update of the city's emergency operations plan. Approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 23, 2024 in the amount of $2,642,730.68. Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Mowing.
Mowing.
Item 3 is approve a contract with Plains Mowing LLC to provide weed and trash abatement services for the Community Development Department.
Vice Mayor and Council, this contract is to provide for the trash and litter services for our Code Enforcement Division. The fees for these services are found on pages 76 to 77 of your council packet, and the minimum is $90 for any sort of trash and litter pickup. These fees are then recouped by filing liens at county on the residential lots. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
It looks like on the contract, the name needs to be corrected. It says Plains Moving instead of Mowing.
Actually, it is moving.
Oh, it is moving?
It is moving.
Okay.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
There's a name out of place, I'm sorry.
Melissa.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item passes. Item 4 is approve a revocable permit for three signs encroaching on various utility easements in Lot 1, Block 1 of the QuickTrip Number 7011 addition, application by QuickTrip.
Craig Honeywell.
Vice Mayor, Council, QuickTrip does have three signs that they are looking to erect. These would be freestanding monument and pole signs. And these three signs happen to be located in utility easements. Page 88 of your packet does show the locations. Two are within utility easements that do not have any city utilities. They only have the private utilities. And there were letters included in your packet giving no objection to that. One is within a utility easement that does have a sewer line, but the sewer line is located between five and 10 feet away from the proposed sign location. This revocable permit can be revoked at any time for any reasonable reason. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'm sorry, how far did you say the one sign was away from the sewer line?
About five to 10 feet.
Thank you.
And this is just on the south property?
Yes, the pole sign, which would be the one that is five to 10 feet from our sewer line, is actually located along the east property line by the service road.
So will we do this for the north property also?
The north property has the two signs that are located in utility easements that don't have any utilities.
Man, okay, I thought that looked like it was all on one, on just the south lot, so my bad, sorry.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. We get everybody?
My sheets are a little misty. It's fine, it's yes.
Okay, item passes. Have you heard any update on when they hope to open?
Actually, a representative for QuickTrip is here today.
Yeah, if you have any, an update, that'd be great. If not, I don't mean to catch off guard.
No, all good. So, right now, we're about three months out, is the hope, with the potential of it being four months. Gas relocation that was waiting on our plat to finish up, which was also waiting on the utility easements and the sign permit, is really the big thing holding us up right now, but the gas company was supposed to mobilize this week. Just got done setting up a meeting with them and our GC onsite for later this week.
All right.
So we're looking pretty good. Hope to have it to you early in the next year.
Great, great. Thanks so much. Item 5 is consider approval of Resolution Number 6123, programming the realignment and widening of Southeastern Avenue and South Broadway Avenue intersection as a surface transportation program urbanized area project.
Vice Mayor and Council, items number 5 through 11 on your packet are all companion items. They are all resolutions that are required by the ACOG roadway grant funding. These projects will be submitted for the federal fiscal year '26 to '27. To, in order to increase the scoring of each project, each project does include a streetscape element, which can be as simple as just providing some trees, or it can be as elaborate as hardscaping. I think that will be yet to be determined through council interaction. They all will include sidewalks and a 10-foot trail, and they will all include some sort of stormwater quality technique. And that could be, in one area, we might have a possibility for some sort of detention or retention pond, but in most of them, it would probably be some sort of sock insert into storm sewer system to collect the sediment. So I will just run through these and the estimated amount, and then the local match amount, so you are aware of that. So the Broadway Avenue from, in Southeastern Intersection, that will be constructed as a roundabout. The federal match, or I'm sorry, the federal grant amount would be 2.68 million, and the local match would be 670,046 dollars. The realignment and widening of the 19th Street and Broadway Tower Intersection, the federal grant would be 3.77 million, and the local match would be 944,631 dollars. The reconstruction and widening of South Telephone Road from 19th Street to Southwest 34th Street, the federal grant amount would be 7 million, and the local match would be 1,760 dollars, 60,000 dollars. The widening of Southwest 34th Street from Little River to Broadway Avenue, that would be from two to four lanes, the federal amount would be 3.56 million, and the local match would be 892,844 dollars. The widening of South Broadway from Eastern Avenue to Willow Pine, from two to four lanes, the federal amount would be 3.23 million, and the local match would be 807,7813 dollars. They all starts to run together, sorry. The reconstruction and widening of Northwest 27th Street and the Shields Boulevard Janeway Intersections, the federal amount would be 3.77 million dollars, the local match 942,566 dollars. And finally, the construction of the 10-foot wide trail on Bryant Avenue from Parkway Drive to Northeast 12th Street, the federal amount would be 1.69 million dollars, and the local match would be 424,600 dollars.
So what's the timing on all of this? Will submit the requests, and then?
Yes.
It'll be issued when?
Yes, so the application deadline is at the end of this month. We will submit for all of these projects, and then the ACOG staff will have some time to review them. We usually have a larger meeting around the first of the year to vote on the projects using a scoring system, and if approved at those, at that time, these are for federal fiscal year '26, '27. So we're still looking at, you know, three, three or four years out.
But, but we'll be able to begin planning?
That's correct. We should know by this winter.
Okay.
And just to confirm, this is not an all or nothing. They could select certain projects?
That's, oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, that's why I've had to separate them out into individual resolutions.
Well, I thought you were just.
My apologies.
Thank you.
I think it's great that we're going after these ACOG funds, federal dollars. We've been pretty successful the past several years in getting some of that federal funding, and that is a huge benefit to our community, so good job.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item 6 is approve, consider approval of Resolution Number 6223, programming the realignment and widening of Southwest 19th Street and South Broadway Avenue Intersection as a surface transportation program urbanized area.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
We have had a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item 7 is consider approval of Resolution Number 6323, programming the reconstruction and widening of South Telephone Road from Southwest 19th Street, north of Southwest 34th Street, from four lanes to five lanes as a surface transportation program urbanized area.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item 8 is consider approval of Resolution Number 6423, programming the widening of Southwest 34th Street from Little River to Broadway Avenue as a surface transportation urbanized area project.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
We have had a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item 9 is consider approval of Resolution Number 6523, program the widening of South Broadway from Southeastern Avenue to Willow Pine Drive as a surface transportation program urbanized area project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Would you call the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item 10 is consider approval of Resolution Number 6623, programming the reconstruction and widening of Northwest 27th Street and North Shields Boulevard Janeway Avenue Intersections as a surface transportation program urbanized area.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, would you call the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item 11, consider approval of Resolution Number 6723, programming the construction of a 10-foot wide multi-use trail along Bryant Avenue from Parkway Drive to Northeast 12th Street as a surface transportation program urbanized area.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item 12, consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of public safety policy services and police management software for an annual fee of $12,145.5 and a one-time implementation fee of $24,017, for a total of $36,157.5 from Lexi Pool as a sole source provider.
Yes, good evening, Vice Mayor, Council. Lexi Pool provides fully developed, state-specific, public safety policy services and policy-managing software for law enforcement, fire departments, and local government. Their policies are researched and written by subject matter experts and vetted by attorneys. They are also based on national standards and best practices while incorporating state and federal laws and regulations. Lexi Pool currently has over 175 policies that would be integrated into our policies. And then, once we go through the policy implementation process, they'll merge those policies together. Their policies are constitutionally sound, and they continue to monitor changes and trends in legislation, case law, and best practices. Currently, our police department uses Lexi Pool. Almost every municipality in Oklahoma City area uses Lexi Pool in the police and fire department. So it's something they monitor, all the changes that happen at the Capitol, laws, state statutes, regulations, again, best practices, and they'll make sure our policies are up to date with current standards to protect us against anything from happening.
Will the realignment of these policies be a significant, significant effort for us?
Oh, yes. This will probably take a couple of years to get completely implemented. The $12,145.5 will be the annual fee, and then the one-time fee for $24,017 is the implementation process, which could take a couple of years to get done. And we currently have probably 400 to 500 pages of policies that they'll have to go through and merge them in with their policies.
All right.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second, and before we call for the vote, Chief, while you're up here, would you like to say anything about the new firefighters that just?
Sure. We graduated six recruits on Friday. Two of them, we already put on shift back in September. They had all their certifications. Two of them went on shift this week, and two more are going to stay for a couple of weeks to finish up EMS class they have to have so they can provide care. But we've got six really good candidates out of 308 applicants, so these are the the final six, and
Very nice.
Wow. Very impressive class, and we're very excited to get them on shift and see what comes of their career. So we've had a really good candidate pool to choose from over the last several years, so we've been very pleased with the applicants we've been getting.
Well, I had an opportunity to attend the ceremony, and it was great, and look forward to them getting out and being in their stations and serving the people.
Yeah, we're real excited to get them on.
Good. Thank you. All right, you can call the vote, please.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item 13 is consider ordinance Number 103723, amending Section 9-111, Part 9, Chapter 1 of the Moore Municipal Code by adding a remedy for failure to maintain a current business license, providing for severability and providing for repealer. Vice Mayor, Council, what this ordinance does, it provides an additional mechanism for us to enforce businesses to maintain their current business license. Currently, right now, we can give a citation, a citation of up to $500. The issue that we're having currently is a lot of businesses are LLCs, they're corporations. Sometimes the owner lives out of state. It is not possible for us to give a citation. We can't go down there and give the citation to the assistant manager or somebody. So what this does is, this will be a last resort. After we have attempted compliance, we would say, look, we're going to go ahead and revoke their certificate of occupancy at this point. It'll be, like I said, additional mechanism for us to obtain enforcement. It'll be done at the last resort, but right now, we're stuck on these certain businesses that do not have an actual owner there on the premises.
And I'm sorry, because the businesses are not listed in here for us. Those don't include, like, 1099 contractors, anything like that. It is?
That is correct. It would be businesses that would have to maintain their business license through the city clerk's office. She maintains a list of all that. She sends out a notice that their business license has expired. There's a process that goes through with that, so that's.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we've had a motion.
Second.
And a second. Would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item passes. Item 14, consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of a 2023 Ford F-250 Crew Cab from Bill Knight Ford for the Parks and Recreation Department in the amount of $47,079 using state contract number SW035.
Vice Mayor and Council, this purchase is to update some of our older equipment. I think this was for a 2002 replacement.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item 15 is consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of a 35-horsepower Yanmeyer R3 tractor from Tractor Bob's. I want to sing their theme song right now, but I won't. In the amount of $38,500 is the lowest quote.
Vice Mayor and Council, this again is a budgeted purchase for an updated tractor to be used out in the parks for regular duties.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Hey, have we ever got that train?
It's getting, it's getting close.
You think it'll be here for the parade?
I don't know about the parade, but Christmas.
All right. Item 16, is that right, 16? Consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of a Vermeer BC900 XL Brush Chipper from Vermeer Great, from Vermeer Great Plains in the amount of $32,497.92 using state contract number SW0196VG.
At this time, we don't have a brush chipper that works for larger bushes and trees, and this will help us by not having to borrow public workses. So this should take care of that issue.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, would you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item 17 is consider declaring 18 police vehicles listed in Exhibit A. Thank you for not letting us have to read all the bins from those. As surplus, and authorize the police department to negotiate the sale of said vehicles to verified law enforcement agencies with any remaining unsold vehicles placed in a public auction.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council. 17, 18, and 19 are partner items. I'll go through 17 first. It is on page 119, and then 18 is on page 120, and 121 is the contract. What we have here, just a little bit of context, with the approval council and leadership of the chief and the manager, we were able to leverage some of those federal dollars and get some of our fleet replaced and a good portion of it. And then, these are the vehicles that we're going to get rid of. And so that's what we're asking you to do, is consider the surplus of those. The 18 police vehicles will be the first 30 days. Those are actually ones that will be viable for partner agencies to actually buy from us. We'll take our markings off, but they'll be able to take them and then put them on the street somewhere else. So that'll be the first batch. The 18, item 18 is the other nine that have something wrong with them that we really wouldn't sell to them, but they'll still have value. And then, 19, item 19 is Purple Wave. That's an auction site that does a really good job of the logistics, and we've had success with them in the past. Staff recommends approval.
Make a motion to approve 17.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item 18 is consider declaring nine police vehicles listed in Exhibit B as surplus and authorize sale at public auction or by public auction.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Had a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item nineteen is consider approval of an internet auction agreement with Purple Wave Auctions to facilitate sale of unsold police vehicles declared as surplus.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, would you call the vote?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item twenty, consider awarding bid number twenty-two-four dash zero-zero-three, construction of the Northmore Avenue and Shields Boulevard Traffic Signal Project to Midstate Traffic Control, Inc., and approve contract in the amount of three hundred eighty-three thousand three hundred sixty-seven dollars.
Vice Mayor and Council, recall when QuickTrip was approved, the traffic study that they had indicated that there was some concern about the trucks being able to access I-35 for southbound, and that the, the, the study recommended that the best alternative for the truck traffic from the QuickTrip would be to go out the south side of the station and down Northmore Avenue over to Shields Boulevard, and then access I-35 from Shields Boulevard. And they also recommended a traffic signal at that location. This item addresses that issue of, of adding the traffic signal at the intersection of Northmore and Shields Boulevard. We had a bid opening on October third. We received three bids, and, and the lowest responsive bid was from Midstate Traffic Control Incorporated, and staff recommends that we go ahead and award the, the contract to Midstate Traffic.
Will we be able to get this done in time to...
It's, it depends on the, there's two things. The WaveTronics chips and how fast that they're able to get the manufacturer to deliver the chips for the signals. Even of a greater concern is the traffic polls are, right now, that are, what they've been indicating is that they've been twelve to fourteen weeks for delivery, and...
So, not likely.
It's, it's gonna be close.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item twenty-one, consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of fifteen Cobalt C-Series traffic controllers from Econo Light in the amount of forty-two thousand six hundred fifty-eight dollars, fifteen cents, as a sole source provider.
Vice Mayor and Council, we're very excited about items twenty-one and twenty-two because this gives us the opportunity to upgrade our traffic signals. Jerry just talked about traffic signals. Item twenty-one will allow us to replace old technology with the most advanced technology for our traffic controllers, for our engineers and our technicians. This will make it easy for them to read and program and do all kinds of stuff. It will also have the interface that will allow us to be able to remotely program and observe what is going on over there.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item twenty-two is consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of AC and DC school zone timer upgrades, a five-year plan with a modem and RTC Connect software from Consolidated Traffic Controls in the amount of seventy thousand seven hundred seventy-four dollars as a sole source provider.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is the most exciting one, because this will give us the opportunity to be able to control and monitor all thirty-two school zone lights. So, it will send alerts to us and know which ones are not functioning properly, and we can also remotely program them and fix what needs to be fixed.
Make a motion to approve?
So, one question. The five-year plan, is that it will take us five years to get all of these in place?
No.
It's a five-year monitoring...
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Second. All right, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item twenty-three, consider approval of a contract renewal for lawn maintenance with Tusnu Lawn and Landscapes.
Vice Mayor and Council, Tusnu has been a great contractor for us with our mowing program, and this is to renew their annual contract with us.
And what are they responsible for?
They have about twenty-plus locations, including all the exits on the highway, Nineteenth Street, Fourth Street, and most of the right-of-ways. That's how guys come and get to.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item passes. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item twenty-four is the consent docket. A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held October second, 2023. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2023-24 in the amount of one million two hundred seventy-seven thousand nine hundred seventy dollars and nine cents.
Most approve?
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item passes. Item twenty-five is consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of a 2025 Freightliner 108 SD Plus Cab and chassis to support a dump truck body for Public Utilities Department from ATC Premier Freightliner doing business as Premier Truck Group in the amount of one hundred thirteen thousand nine hundred fourteen dollars, using state contract number SW zero-three-five-T.
Vice Mayor and Council, items twenty-five and twenty-six are companion items. Freightliner has a build date of a year or less, and so, that is why we chose Freightliner instead of Peterbilt. And this will be to purchase the dump truck for utilities.
So, is this in addition to the one we approved?
That one was for streets and drainage. This is for utilities.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We've had the motion and a second, and you'd call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item passes. Item twenty-six is consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of a dump truck body for the Public Work, Public Utilities Department from Industrial Truck Equipment in the amount of fifty-five thousand one hundred dollars, using state contract number SW zero-one-zero-six.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is the body for the cab and chassis in item twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We've had the motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries.
Thanks, Tony.
We will recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item twenty-seven is the consent docket. A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held October second, 2023. And item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 23-24 in the amount of seventy-six thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars and twenty-one cents.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Oh, you've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. We will recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting.
You'd call the roll, please.
Kathy Griffith?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Lynn Lewis? Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here. Item twenty-nine is a consent doc. Receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held September eighteenth, 2023.
Most approve?
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Please call the vote.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. We'll now recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
And let the record reflect that all members are still present. Item thirty, new business, Citizens Forum for Items Not on the Agenda. Nobody signed up. Is there anybody here that would like to speak? Item B is items from city council trustees. And item C is items from city trust manager.
Just glad to report that we're still just one week out on all of our big trash pickups.
Great.
All right, thank you. Item thirty-one is executive session. Section 307, Title Twenty-Five, Oklahoma Statute permits the public body to meet in executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It's the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A is discussed, considered, and if deemed appropriate, convene into executive session and discuss pending litigation styled City of Moore versus PTS Solutions, Inc., case number CJ dash two-zero-two-two dash seven-seven-seven, and authorize legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the City of Moore as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma Statute 307B four.
Make a motion that we adjourn to executive session?
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, we'll convene to executive session. Yes. We'll convene to executive session.